Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for coming this evening. Tonight, we have Mr. Dave Bolzoni, who is the Business Administrator for the city. This is an opportunity for council to discuss with the Business Administrator the city's 2018 operating budget, which is in fifth order on our agenda this evening. Just for the public, council received its copy of the budget yesterday. We started going through it, so Mr. Bolzoni is going to offer an overview of the budget, and we'll probably develop our questions as we get more depth into our copies of the budget. So, thank you for coming, Mr. Bolzoni, and for the last time, here you go.
And thank you very much, Council President Wexler. I would have loved to be able to say that my final budget would have been submitted without any typographical errors. Unfortunately, we found a couple of them, which the city clerk had addressed, relatively minor for a change, which is good. But what I would like to do is maybe get into an overview. We can talk about some departmental highlights, if you'd like, as well. I know we're kind of restricted for time, and certainly, if you have any questions based on at least a preliminary review, that you're certainly welcome to ask. You all have my phone number as well, so at any point, you're welcome to call me at any time, and I'll certainly try and assist as I can. What I'd like to note is that what I've said really for the last several years is that the budget process for the city has really been transitory, and that generally continues, although we completed a number of fairly significant initiatives. And all that was really designed to create some stability within the budget. Certainly, there were impacts out there relative to the budget process, but I think what we've seen is certainly the construction of some stability within the budget for the upcoming year and hopefully beyond, based on some of the projections that we've seen. Important to note that the debt service budget has been reduced from 2014, where you had a budget of about $14.7 million, to approximately $10.8 million, or a reduction of over 26%. And that's important to note, and I note that within the context of this budget discussion, because much of that was high-yielding debt that was either refunded, or defeased, or paid off. And the reduction in those recurring costs are helpful when you're constructing a budget and trying to project out on whatever dollars are needed for operating expenditure increases. And certainly, the impact or influence on the budget comes from some of the monetization transactions, which you're certainly well aware of, and I'm not going to elaborate on, at least in this context. Real estate tax mileage would remain the same for 2018, and actually, the breakdown between dollars assigned to the operating budget and dollars assigned to debt service would remain constant, and that's noted in the budget process as well. It's important to note, and I wouldn't overlook this, that the budget had a fairly significant impact because of a reduction of $5,273,000 in the minimum municipal obligation for the pension. And I think that's critical, because if the actuarial adjustment didn't occur, and that actuarial adjustment was based on the suspension in the cost of living adjustments for pension retirees, that difference would have had to have been made up within the operating budget. And that's a fairly substantial number, for which it's very difficult to just adjust within the context of relatively constant revenues. And I can get into that a little bit when we talk about the revenue component of the Within that context as well, the discount rate, or the stated investment rate for the plan was reduced from 8% to 7.5%. Again, all designed to try and create improvements in the pension plan and create further stability. And I think, as you're aware, over the last few years, we've looked at different ways that we can impact the plan much more favorably, or much more positively. Again, important to note that that decrease follows a fairly substantial increase in 2017 because of the elimination of the Act 44 smoothing reduction. And that's pretty important to note. Again, those costs are fairly significant. It's not something you can hide within the context of a relatively minor budget adjustment. Also important to note that this is really the first time in a number of years where the city doesn't have any planned debt initiatives of any significance. And you're certainly aware of the various transactions that we've completed over the last several years. There isn't anything in the budget based on any planned initiative. I did include a line item in the budget, if anything may be contemplated for 2018, any debt initiative, but I only funded that line item using an increment of $1,000. Certainly, there could be a need, and obviously, at some point, the condition of a municipal building needs to be addressed. Given the magnitude of those repairs, it's going to be hard to be able to fund them in any given year, just through an expenditure from the operating budget. So, that may be something that's contemplated once a full assessment of the municipal building The operating budget for 2018 also includes various salary adjustments, and as I've pointed out to you before, and we've used different methods in order to try and achieve that goal, it was a matter of trying to bring salary levels back to what I'll call a more realistic level. Not necessarily market-based, because you don't really want to look at conditions comparatively between the corporate sector and the government, but even as I pointed out to you before, looking at peer cities, there was some disparity in salary levels. And certainly, the city has run relatively lean for the last few years, although we did look at, in certain cases, additions to staff where needed, where we thought we can find some value, or offer some value in the delivery of that service. And I think, being able to look at it somewhat retrospectively, it's probably important to acknowledge that in moving this process along, there's been a lot of really good input that's been provided by both Pennsylvania Economy League and by HJ Strategies, and I think their assistance to the city in trying to move the process forward has been immeasurable. And I just wanted to acknowledge both of those groups for all of their assistance to the city. We can talk a little bit about revenues, if you'd like, and just get into some of the highlights on some of the revenue line items. I'm not sure how I'm doing on time. I think we'll be okay. Probably more so on the expenditure side, but we can get into some of the highlights as needed on the revenue side of the budget. Important to note, as I stated before, we're looking at real estate taxes remaining relatively constant, and that's in spite of the impact of another reduction in the assessed valuation of the city. I've pointed this out before over previous budget discussions. We've really seen a more continuous reduction in the city's assessed valuation. When your growth is relatively flat or limited, and the growth in the city's revenue, other primary revenue driver has been through earned income tax revenues, a reduction in those revenues with the other primary revenue driver is certainly problematic, because your expenditures, your costs, generally are increasing on an annual basis. If you've got one primary revenue driver that remains consistently flat on a year-over-year basis, it really creates problems in trying to construct a budget. And that's certainly important to note, and I think you're all aware of the impacts of a relatively flat or decreasing valuation of city property. Relative to the refuse fee, it remains constant. We've had a number of discussions, and because of the litigation, I'm not going to get into some of the points relative to those discussions, but it is important to note that we're changing a number of processes. So, we changed the billing and collection methods that are being used to try and create greater efficiencies and offer more options for people to be able to pay their bill. There is an ongoing evaluation relative to the recycling and refuse program. We're expecting to get the completion of this evaluation through the technical assistance grant that the state has provided. Information was provided to the engineering firm that was retained for that process. I'm expecting that that review should be completed by the first quarter of next year. And again, that provides some additional methodology to really be able to evaluate the program. And in addition to that, the analytics that were used for rental registration in identifying rental units, and the impact that that could have on the refuse collection program, could have a favorable impact on your ability to deliver the service, and the way you cost out that service. So, if you think about it in relatively simplistic terms, if you're able to control your costs and improve your revenue through different methods, analytics could be one. It's going to have an inverse relationship on how you price that service. So, it's really been what we've been trying to accomplish over the last several years. The difficulty is that this process takes time. So, we like to see immediate results. Doesn't always work out that way, but that's really the intended goal. Try and create efficiencies in that service, and see if you can cost it out so that it provides a more favorable impact on the residents of the city. Relative to the local taxes, and I'm not going to get into each one of them, they remain relatively constant year-over-year, but I did want to note that because of favorable collections in the real estate transfer tax, I'm recommending through the budget that we reduce that tax by another 2/10 of a percent. So, we would be able to take it from 2.4 down to 2.2, and without budgeting for a reduction in revenue. The line item has performed relatively well over the last several years, and I think a reduction at that level is certainly warranted, and I don't think it's going to impact the projected revenue in that line item by any real measure at all. Just to note, on the licenses and permits budget, we had been working with a third party to identify rental units. We received a report that we are now incorporating into that database, which provided a relatively significant identification or disparity of what we actually had on file, and what we were able to identify, which I think is certainly helpful. If we're going to be in a position where we're going to put a program in place, we want it to be as effective as possible. And again, the impacts of having a database which is fairly accurate, certainly, there's a lot of importance in that in a number of different areas within the budget. I've also included a dollar amount to conduct what I'll call a codification of the enacting ordinances which are really driving the various line items in the budget, and I know Councilman Evans has brought this up previously. And I think it's important to really get into that process and take a look at the supporting legislation behind each of those line items, to really come to some determination as to where some of them are needed, and it's very likely that some of them aren't. Some of them have very little or minimal revenue impact. And again, the department is there to provide a service, not to be a revenue driver for the city. So, I think the codification effort will help, and that's incorporated into the budget also. I think if we have time, we could get into the expenditure side as well, and get into some highlights if we have sufficient time to do so.
Mr. Bolzoni, as you and I discussed in caucus, there's been some talk about impact of the potential suits against the city. Could you just touch on that, in terms of what we're talking about tonight?
Well, there are a number of them, and I'm not going to address their relative merit. That's something for the city's law office to conduct. As I pointed out to you before, you have two primary revenue drivers within the city. Your local taxes, which include your earned income tax, and your real estate taxes. Your budget has been relatively constant for several years, and for good reason. Your public safety budget in entirety is approximately 49% of your overall budget. So, it's not as though you can create an immediate adjustment in one area without impacting the other. So, you do the math. If you've got two primary revenue drivers, and you're looking at impacting one, where do you think you make up the difference? And I don't want to get into too much more, because I don't want to be an influence in any of those discussions relative to the litigation, but again, I would probably view it from more of a broader perspective relative to the budget, because you've been looking at these every year. So, I think you have had a chance to look at the numbers, and there's certainly some constancy in the budget. Obviously, there are adjustments that are made based on the impact of the monetizations that the city has gone through, and some of the other primary initiatives. But it's important to recognize that, you know, the revenue side of your budget is really driven by two primary sources.
If you don't mind, I think now, questions from council, if we want to use those now for this time, so anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. First of all...
Did you want to, excuse me, talk about the revenues, or the expenditure side, or just get into a question and answer now while we have a little bit of time left?
Okay, that's fine.
Dave, there's an effort put forward to increase some salaries. There's $83,050 appropriated to salary increases to key non-unit employees. As you know, I'm a proponent of that. I think that our cabinet members and non-unit employees are woefully underpaid. Their salaries, some of them are equal to what they were being paid in 2003. It's an embarrassment to the city. Can you touch on that? Because I looked through the narrative, I couldn't find exactly which ones were getting increases, which ones weren't, or you don't have to get into too specific, but maybe just a broad stroke on some of the races.
Well, and I do have them delineated, and certainly, I can pass that information to the clerk, where I had notes within that spreadsheet, and that's correct. The salary adjustment is $83,050. I think after three years, we've finally gotten a number of the salary levels to a point where I think they're somewhat realistic and can be subject to annual adjustment. And some of that has been done through the operating budget, some of it has been done through adjustments through the receipt of grants. But I think it's important to recognize that the city generally runs relatively lean compared to its peers. And the reason I provided council with the 2003 operating budget for the city was just to be reflective on that fact. If you look at department levels at that time, and you look at some of the salary levels, and then try and understand that we're a number of years in the future, and we're constructing budgets with, in some cases, less departmental staff, and in a number of cases, salary levels that are lower than they were in 2003, you really have to ask yourself, how could that be possible? The employees of the city are like employees of any organization or any company. They are assets of your organization. They're not uniform assets. Some performances are better than others, but generally, they're assets. They're here to deliver a service. You want to try and encourage performance and efficiency as much as possible. Compensation is one way to do it. Now, it's important to note that salary levels will reach a certain level where they may not necessarily be comparable with corporate levels, or even with some of the city's peers, but it is important to note that benefits for city employees are favorable, and that makes up some of the difference, but not entirely. There's got to be a balance there. Some of it is somewhat subjective, some of it is based on experience. It's been recommended by the Pennsylvania Economy League that the city conduct a salary analysis in 2018, and that's included in the Business Administration Professional Services budget, because I think if we really want to document where those salaries should be compared to where they are, that would be pretty helpful. But I think we're getting to a point where they're somewhat realistic in terms of compensation levels and experience. Remember, you've got people who work here who are very experienced. We've got areas that are extremely critical. The information technology department is like the city's electrical grid. If it goes down, the city goes down. And you've got a lot of experience in that department, and they should be compensated accordingly, and it's reflected in the 2018 operating budget. There are three new positions that I included in here. One of them is a full-time administrative assistant in the mayor's office, in addition to the city clerk, where a lot of calls go. A lot of calls go into the mayor's office as well. It hadn't worked out quite so well with a part-time assistant. The mayor had asked if I can include in the budget the prospect of a full-time assistant, which I did. Also, in the budget was the inclusion of another foreman in Department of Public Works. And again, for the size of the Department of Public Works, we have one foreman. It's just not realistic. And what I also did was, I took the Parks and Recreation function out of the Department of Public Works, and created its own department, which historically was the case with the city.
Right.
We have, I believe it's 28 parks, and that obviously is increasing with the recent addition of the 500 Lachmon Avenue Park. In addition to that, we've got at least five park projects that are ongoing right now. They've all been run through the Office of the Business Administrator, and that just doesn't work. So, I think it's probably advantageous at this point in time to get back to what the city did reasonably well at one time, and that was to have its own Parks and Recreation Department, with dedicated employees that are not necessarily taken from that department and assigned to refuse because of absences. I think we've seen the impact of the difficulties we've had assigning individuals. Some of the parks are deteriorating, and it's hard to play catch-up in that process. These are expensive propositions. I mean, we know how much we're looking at within the budgetary contacts for Northern Bruno Park, for Crowley Park as well, but, you know, these are absolute assets for the city. Residents rely on them. It's really incumbent upon the city to try and keep up with them.
One quick question, too. Last year, you mentioned that we reduced the real estate transfer tax from, well, total was 3.4, down to 2.9. Now, we're going down to 3.7. You saw a little impact in the budget. It was outperforming, and it continued to outperform, if that's the case, right?
Correct.
Because I felt that that was an opportunity to reduce the tax and actually increase revenue, because I think it's making the city more friendly to homeowners to buy properties. It's another message that is out there to the public, that we're looking at these type of things, because it's quite a shock when homeowners go to their closing table, and they see what the real estate transfer tax is, and the city is granting, and it's been an issue for a long time. So, rolling these taxes back is very important, and this is one that's sort of a no-brainer, because it's outperforming, and it's proving that it's outperforming. So, I appreciate that. I just want to be more of a comment than a question, that we're continuing to trend downward with that nuisance tax. So, I'm sure these guys have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Bolzoni. Councilman Wexler touched on this a little bit, and based on your comments before, I don't know how much you're going to be able to expand on this because of the litigation, but it's been a concern, I think, of all of ours, the lawsuits that have been brought against the city. And you kind of answered this before, but, and I've said this before, if we lost one of those lawsuits, it would have a major impact on the city's budget and our exit from Act 47. So, has the administration been coming up with contingency plans? And I think you alluded to the fact that, I mean, one of the obvious ones would be we would have to increase real estate taxes, but is there anything else? Have there been any other ideas or plans in case we lost one of these, and, you know, the impact it would have on our future budgets?
Well, we have, and we've had a number of discussions, but I think it's important to recognize that it's not advantageous at this point to be able to publicize a list of items that could be included within what we'll call Plan B. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense with where the litigation is in the process. But the matter has certainly been discussed internally. We've discussed it at length internally. We've discussed its impacts internally. We've discussed the impacts with the Pennsylvania Economy League. So, there have been a number of discussions. I only wanted to present, as I did to Council President Wexler, a broad-based understanding of what that impact is. And again, I'll go back to state that if you've got two primary revenue drivers, and you're impacting one, you're impacting the other. It's just the way it works.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned earlier the reduction of the MMO, and it's clear, looking at this budget, and obviously, what's gone on the past two years, the overall health of the pension fund has increased rather dramatically, mainly because of the elimination of COLAs to the retirees. Now, my one question is, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but when we get to the point that, or if we get to the point, that the pension funds become actuarially sound, do we then have to start giving the COLAs back to the retirees? And then, has anyone done an analysis of what impact that will have, or will it have an impact?
Well... Well, and there's a number of questions. But I've referred to the adjustment relative to the COLAs as a suspension. And it's important to note that they were suspended because the plan is severely distressed.
Right.
And the distress levels were horrendous. And at one point, probably the worst-funded plan in the state. So there have to be provisions that are made in order to try and impact those funding levels. That was one. It had a significant impact on the actuarial calculations relative to the plan. And obviously it had an impact, significant impact on the minimum municipal obligation. But so will, at some point, hopefully in the relatively near future, any contribution from the proceeds from the sewer asset sale. All things being equal, that will have a pretty significant impact on the MMO, and it's certainly going to impact funding levels. So the question you'd want to ask yourself is, what do you do when a component of the plan or the plan itself in entirety exits the severe distress level?
Right.
Well, I think you really have to revisit the process relative to those allocations out to retirees. Now, keep in mind that the funding levels from the plan have improved measurably from where they were. But at this point, they're not close to fifty percent. The contribution from, the prospective contribution from the sewer asset sale, depending ultimately on what that number is going to be, could take those plan levels above fifty percent. So you go from severely distressed to moderately distressed. Now, you're still distressed.
Okay, so then the COLAs, they wouldn't kick in. In other words, the retirees-
The elimination of your distress level comes at ninety percent.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if there's anyone in the state that's funded at ninety percent.
Okay.
So I don't think you necessarily want to have that discussion, wait to have that discussion in anticipation of seeing your plan levels at ninety percent.
Okay.
I think when you get to the point where your plan levels are exiting severely distressed and moving into moderately distressed, and if the trend line is favorable, I think you absolutely want to have those discussions. And then, as you pointed out, you do want to have your actuary look at various scenarios where what is it going to take for the city to reach the minimally distress level, which is seventy percent? So I see those discussions occurring when the plan levels hit fifty percent, and I think they should. We're not there yet, but there is a very distinct possibility from some of the the actuarial assumptions I've seen that with the prospective deposit of the plan from sewer asset sale proceeds, those discussions could occur as soon as next year.
Okay. And that leads me into my next question. Is, the last we heard, there was, I think, twenty-two million dollars from the proceeds that were going to be deposited into the pension fund. So can you give us an update on when that's going to occur? And an update on, and you've given me an update on the trust agreement, but has there been any movement on that? When will we see that? Will it be done before the first of the year? Are we looking at two thousand and eighteen before that becomes a reality?
Well, I think the legislation of the trust agreement is going to be sent down for your consideration this year.
Okay.
So that creates a trust fund. And certainly there are guidelines within that for the use of those dollars and restrictions relative to the use of those dollars, which I think are very helpful. Relative to the the actual commitment to deposit those funds, certainly as you're aware, requires council approval. What we've talked about all along is meeting the conditions, the contractual conditions that were achieved two years ago and what should be fulfilled within within relatively, a relatively short timeline. So one of the last conditions was the, pertained to the disability reviews. And as you're aware, the city had gone through a request for proposal process, selected a firm to be able to assist in that endeavor. And that's something that should occur prior to the end of this year. I know the Human Resources Department is going through a review of that right now. But that would be probably one of the final items that need to be met in order to actually have the discussion on the allocation. Now, that discussion may change somewhat. We had talked all along about approximately eighteen million going into the plan and another four million that would be used to buy down the discount rate. Well, we didn't expect to be able to reduce the discount rate from eight to seven and a half percent because of the change in, or the suspension of the cost of living adjustments. So what should ensue now is, so do we want to try and buy the discount rate down further? And keep in mind, reducing the discount rate has an inverse impact on your minimum municipal obligation. It would increase. So at what level do you want to try and increase it? These are all based on actuarial reviews. You really have to get into a detailed discussion with your actuary. But in theory, sure, you could look at no additional discount rate reductions and look at a twenty-two million dollar deposit of the plan. One of the items I included in the operating budget was the creation of an OPEB trust fund. And that's very highly recommended. It's a best practice for local government. So maybe instead of the buy-down of the discount rate, you use that component to fund the OPEB trust fund. These are all discussions that I think have to occur probably within the first quarter of next year and certainly before the allocation becomes somewhat more fixed.
And I think you had previously said to me that, because I think people are under the impression that the twenty-two million would just be deposited right into the fund. But the trust agreement, it would be kind of divvied out, not, it's not all going to be put into the fund, correct?
Well, the trust agreement is operative relative to the use of those dollars and the commitment that would be assigned to those dollars. But again, some of that discussion is once the fulfillment of some of the contractual requirements is completed, do those dollars go into the fund immediately? Do you use a dollar-cost averaging method? So maybe what you do is take that dollar amount and maybe it's eighteen million. Is that allocation completed on an incremental basis? Maybe a certain amount each quarter to go into the fund. These are all things that I think have to occur, and it's more of a pragmatic process. And again, like everything we've tried to accomplish, it's certainly slower than I think what any of us would like. But we are getting to a conclusion with that. So getting the the legislation for the trust fund approved, which sets certain conditions and restrictions on the use of those dollars and expectations relative to the use of those dollars is important. And also achieving some conclusion with meeting the contractual requirements, which would then trigger a review by council to approve the allocation. That's important as well. But then that leads to a discussion on, how does the allocation occur? Again, the eighteen million was going to go right into the plan. The four million is going to be used to buy down the discount rate, as I pointed out. Do we continue to buy down the discount rate? That four million was, was going to be allocated to buy the discount rate by a half a percent. Well, we just did that because of the suspension of the COLAs. Do we want to buy it down another half a percent? These are all going to be subject to actuarial review and certainly more discussion.
Okay. And just an additional question on that. The proceeds right now, the twenty-two million, in the budget it says, the remaining proceeds associated with the sewer asset sale are invested subject to Act ten of two thousand and sixteen provision. So is that, are those proceeds making money by being in the bank right now?
Well, they are, and they're actually not, they're not in a bank. They're with, all of those dollars are right now housed with Morgan Stanley. They are being invested according to the restrictions that we have for local government investments. And those restrictions are very notable. So the yield that you're going to be able to get on those investments is going to be limited. Most of the investments are Treasury or agencies, some very short-term commercial paper, and they're all yield restricted. But what we've tried to do is at least try and maximize the yield on what we have, even though it's not going to compare to some of the yields that, for example, can be obtained through investments of the pension fund. Can't do that because of those restrictions, and they're outlined under Act ten.
Okay, thank you. Kind of a bigger picture question, but it does have an impact on the budget. So when we're talking about exiting Act forty-seven, you know, you look at the budget and we have the LST that is tripled. Can you just talk about, if we do exit Act forty-seven, what taxing ability or other benefits will the city lose, if any? And how will we make up for that revenue?
Honestly, I would leave that discussion for the Pennsylvania Economy League as recovery coordinator. I do know that there's been some impact based on legislation on what occurs with the local services tax.
Right.
The dollar amount, if we're looking at a reduction by a third, the dollar amount, in theory, can be made up with a fairly healthy, relatively stable budget. But I think those discussions in some detail, and I would actually ask the Pennsylvania Economy League for some projections relative to that budget impact, because it is important.
Right. Okay, good. And then in the budget, in your narrative, it makes mention of, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, the conversion from the business-privileged mercantile tax to the payroll tax. And this may be another question for Pell, but do we have a timeline on when that will occur? Or, because we've been talking about this for a long time now. So I'm assuming, you know, further discussion is going to happen in two thousand and eighteen. But do you foresee this taking place next year or?
That's been the intent all along, was to really see some impact in two thousand and nineteen. That timeline may be relatively challenged because we're going to be entering the two thousand and eighteen budget year pretty quickly. I think it's a good forum for discussion at the coordinators' meeting because the coordinator had been doing some analysis relative to that conversion and how it would work. And I think we'd want to try and solidify that because it is a very important consideration. And certainly it has an impact, not only on the city, but on the school district as well.
Yeah, my understanding on that is that the school district has to have the information as far as- Are they going with it by June or July of two thousand and eighteen to make it into the two thousand and nineteen budget year? So the pressure's going to be on, probably in the first quarter, to get the information we need to get the school district on board to do it.
Yeah, that's the difficulty in approaching the two thousand and eighteen budget. Not as much so on the city, but certainly with the school district involvement because of their budget process.
One of the things I noticed, just in my cursory overview of the budget, is the increase in healthcare costs. And one of the things, one question that I have for you is, in the Human Resources Department, it says, "Insurance costs are forecasted to increase nearly twenty-five percent due to organic growth in the city's property and casualty insurances and settlements associated with the law office activity." Can you just explain that, like what the law office activity is and what, I wasn't sure what that meant?
Well, and I'll leave that discussion more with the city solicitor, but insurance settlements have a certain cost to them. We've not necessarily budgeted those specifically.
Okay.
And those costs were embedded in different line items within the budget. We actually tried to assign those out now through a specific allocation within the Human Resources Department. That's the reason for that impact. It's not that they haven't been there previously.
Right.
We're just now trying to delineate them somewhat separately. Relative to overall healthcare costs, I think generally we budgeted for an increase of about four to five percent. And that's only based on the expectation that as we change plan administrators, along with some of the other impacts that we've had relative to prescription drugs and other components of the delivery of healthcare benefits, that you're going to have some favorable cost impact. But the fact of the matter is that healthcare costs continue to go up. And it's a matter of trying to manage those and minimize them as much as possible.
Right. And then the same, would this apply to the tax office too? I noticed in there that there's a healthcare increase of twenty-three percent for the tax office.
Right. And the reason for that is because I under-budgeted it in two thousand and seventeen. So in order to get that number where it was more realistic with the actual costs, the increase comparatively year-over-year was significant. So the reason for that impact was because I under-budgeted it in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. One of the other things that's mentioned in the budget is about pilots. And it says in the narrative, "A more direct, targeted, practical approach to this process of engagement may support improved collections." Can you just explain from the administration's perspective, what does that look like, a more direct, targeted approach in two thousand and eighteen?
Well, I know that sounds great, but, you know, it can be backed up by an actual discussion. So in meeting with the University of Scranton, the approach that I had taken with them was, it would be incredibly beneficial, I think, if the dollars that you were contributing to the city are assigned. So that you know that those dollars are actually going to have a direct impact on a certain initiative. And that was fairly well-received. So I thought if it was fairly well-received by them, why couldn't it be fairly well-received by others? Now, it's not that there haven't been other contributions, you know, certainly the retention of HJA strategies and the dollars that have come from different nonprofits in order to enable them to assist the city. At some point, you know, we would like to approach them as well. That's a form of a targeted contribution also. So again, if it's fairly well-received by one, why couldn't it be fairly well-received by others? To know that your dollar is going to be assigned to this specific task or this specific initiative. So you know that every dollar that you're spending or contributing on the city's behalf or to the city is actually going to have a measurable impact. And that's something that we've not been able to say previously because we've not been able to measure it.
I would agree with that, definitely.
I would too, because I've had some conversations as well with some of the nonprofits, and that's what I heard over and over again, that they didn't want to see the money go into proverbial black hole. They want to see it targeted for something specific, to get value from it. And I think there is an opportunity, as the budget says, to increase that amount if we target the amounts.
I agree. I think in theory, it certainly sounds like it would work. Just through the one discussion we had, it was very well-received. And again, I would, I would like to say that if that's the case, you would hope that others would look at it the same way.
You mentioned in the beginning about the salary increases and also that there may be a salary analysis in the future. My one question is, is there also a consideration to establish an employee evaluation system to link performance with compensation eventually? I've seen other cities do that, like a merit-based type system.
Well, I think that's important, and I would strongly recommend it. I don't think we've gotten there yet. What I've recommended in the budget, not only this year, I mentioned it, but in prior budgets, was actually look at rolling adjustments where not everyone, every year, is subject to the possibility of increase. I think you stuff to manage the process more effectively. So you take a certain component of the of the employee base outside of contractual obligations and look at merit adjustments. And then the next component of that employee base, the following year, would be subject to a merit adjustment. But I think that's helpful. And I don't think there's any question. A lot of that process, unfortunately, is somewhat subjective right now.
Right.
And when it gets subjective, it could be subject to interpretation that may or may not be entirely correct.
Okay.
So it's a good suggestion.
Okay. And I also noticed in the budget, the city- And I also noticed in the budget, the city planner is being assigned from OECD to Licensing and Inspections Department. What is the reason for that?
Which is where he should have been all along. You know, most of his responsibilities, I think, have a direct correlation to the function of that department. And I understand the reason why it was done, to try and save on salary costs, but it just didn't make a lot of sense, given the responsibilities that the planner actually assumes on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. Under the Fire Department budget, and this just may have been a clerical error, I'm not sure, but one thing that caught my eye, it says, "While the city expects future staffing to remain relatively constant without SAFER grant support," and then it doesn't go on.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's an error, but...
Okay, what is the...
We're not expecting any further reimbursement from the SAFER grant other than what was budgeted for this year.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the timing of that reimbursement, so hence, that's the reason why I didn't incorporate that into the miscellaneous revenue category within the revenue side of the budget.
Okay, so we are going to get that, the SAFER grant, next year?
This would have been the final year of reimbursement. But again, I'm not sure of the timing of that, whether some of it carries into 2018 or not. But I didn't incorporate a dollar amount into the 2018 budget.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now, based on my review. Appreciate it, thank you.
As we stated before, we received this package yesterday. They got to go through it, so speaking to Councilman Perry and Councilman Rogan, they're working with it right now. So, as best we can say, that's the questions for this evening. I just want to express my gratitude for your appearance tonight, and actually express my gratitude for your service that you've given the city over the past four years. I don't think any of the success that we've achieved would have been possible without you. And just want to say thanks, Dave.
Well, and thank you, I'd like to thank all of you. None of what had been done could have been accomplished without the level of cooperation that I think has been conducted. And I tried to be as transparent as possible, and I've also tried to be as communicative as possible with council. As the city clerk can certainly attest to, there isn't a day that's gone by where I've not been in her office. And I think that's important, and I hope that continues. Because I think as the city, as you're well aware, and as the city officials and residents have seen, the inability to communicate and cooperate is absolutely toxic. And this isn't about personalities. This is about professionalism. This is about trying to work in the best interests of the city. I think the residents of the city should be proud that they've got a group as professional as all of you have been and continue to be. And especially in your case, Council President Wexler, you had some very big shoes to fill, and I think you did so very admirably. And I'd like to thank all of you for your cooperation.
Dave, I'd like to thank you personally. I think that our relationship has been a template for future BAs and how they deal with city council and how we deal with the BA. It's been an honor to work with you. I think we've got a lot of things done. I appreciate our give and take, sometimes on a daily basis, sometimes not.
Sometimes more give than take.
Sometimes more give than take, that's right. But all I want to say is, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
And I would also like to say, Mr. Bolzoni, it really has been a pleasure. When you said transparent, it is true, you're in our office all the time. You're very accessible to us, and I really appreciated that. And I don't know if you can answer this, but, and you know this better than anybody, your position is so crucial to the city and the administration. So, when does the next business administrator take your position? And what does that transition look like? If you can tell us that, maybe you can't.
Well, and I can't really. The mayor has asked me to meet with someone tomorrow to discuss the position, and I'm going to be here tomorrow, so, and I told him I would certainly do that. I think any of those inquiries probably should be directed to him.
Okay.
I just hope that whoever it is tries to view this process similarly to how I have. And the, again, the level of communication between the administrative and legislative bodies is absolutely critical. And someone has to be that bridge. And for the last few years, that's been me, and I hope that that process continues.
Thank you. This will conclude our caucus. I think we'll take five minutes, and we'll return. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. This evening, we especially remember those who have served our nation and have laid down their lives to protect our freedom. We also take a special time to commemorate the 242nd anniversary of the birthdate of the Marine Corps. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of Council Number 118, 2017. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? This piece is being taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for a final vote. It is the OECD 2018 Action Plan. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular piece of legislation may do so during Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, so move. Spencer, reading other minutes?
Third Order, 3A, minutes of the regular meeting of the Lackawanna County Land Bank, held October 13, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, check received November 8, 2017, from Comcast in the amount of $267,137.57 for quarterly franchise fee payment.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have two brief announcements. And I can't believe it's a cold blue already. It just seems like it's too early in the year for that. But we are going to have Lackawanna County at 6:00 AM on Friday, November 10, and ending at 2:00 PM Saturday, the 11th. They will be issuing a cold blue. And again, just to remind everybody, cold blue is when there's temperatures of 20 degrees or lower. And in times of need, there are two places where you can go for shelter. That is St. Anthony's Haven, 409 Olive Street in Scranton. The hours there are 7:30 PM to 8:00 AM. And the Community Intervention Center at 445 North 6th Avenue in Scranton, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And there's always more information on these at lackawannacounty.org. The second one, and this is for Halleck's Heroes again, this is going to be coming up, this event, which I've been talking about for last month, will be coming up a week this Saturday. And it's going to be at the FOP Lodge, 401 Railroad Avenue. Again, this is for Officer Halleck, who was diagnosed with a rare form of leukemia. And it's definitely him and his family's time in need. It's going to be $15 per person at the door, and all money raised goes to help Chris and his family. So, again, please, let's turn out and really be there for him, because he and, like all the police officers, they're there for us all the time. Thank you.
City Hall will be closed Friday, November 10, in observance of Veterans Day. DPW is working tomorrow. There will be Refuge and Recycling Collection. DPW will be off on Monday, November 13. Refuge and Recycling will be behind one day next week. On agenda items, and just an announcement for next week, a public hearing for the 2018 General City Operating Budget will be scheduled for next Thursday, November 16, at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
Fourth Order, Citizens' Participation.
Commissioner Lauren Cummings?
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you? Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Rogan and Mr. Gahan on the reelection, along with the other newly-elected candidates. And for those who didn't win, you are successful, because you did run and tried to make a difference in your community. So, thank you. With that said, I'm here tonight to discuss reassessment. I understand Mr. Evans has stated he plans on asking the mayor to file a lawsuit on behalf of the city to force the county to perform reassessment. Today, we received a letter from Mayor Courtright urging us to do the same. Sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, apologize. Recently, I have set up informational sessions to discuss and educate citizens on reassessment and property taxes. I plan on continuing those meetings. I have been against reassessment, campaigned against it, and I'm still against performing one now. However, it's not just reassessment that I'm opposed to. It's the flawed property tax law that I'm completely against. After seeing the results of both the state ballot question and the county reassessment question, it is very apparent that I'm not alone. Few reasons in regards to reassessment. And, Mr. Evans, I would hope that you would correct me if I'm wrong on this. I'm under the impression there's only three reasons for reassessment. One would be an expensive and burdensome county-wide reassessment. Two would be newly constructed buildings. The controversial one would be a change in structure of building, for example, adding a garage or additional rooms to a home. But the controversial issue that starts when property is sold, a lot of people tend to believe that once it's sold or transferred, that it's reassessed again.
That's not true.
Now, that's a spot assessment, correct?
Right.
So, that is illegal.
It is illegal.
That's the first problem I have a problem with in regards to this property tax law. A lot of people don't know that. And when I went around to the county and told them, they were shocked to hear that their houses don't get reassessed on sale or transfer. So, what is the municipality supposed to do, then? Reassessments, when they become inequitable, out of sync, as you all talk about and I agree with? Well, the property tax law leaves it up to the municipality or the city to fight for their taxpayers when appeals from property owners occur. Many municipalities, however, either have no idea that they can do this on a reverse appeal, or they just cannot, simply cannot afford to send solicitors to provide the defense needed to keep their appeals in check. Therefore, according to statistics, even after reassessment is completed, within one year, it will be, again, unequal, unfair, requiring yet another reassessment within a few years. This, in my opinion, is the very example of this, what doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results comes into play. So, then what's the solution? Well, that's why I'm here this evening. I would like to ask the city council to first try to join the county commissioners, along with other municipalities, to lobby our state representatives, to finally do something at the state level to end the property owners and local governments' frustration from this outdated and destructive property tax law that does nothing but divide our communities. You know, I can stand here and go through a litany of reasons why I feel the city of Scranton is in the shape it is in, but you know what? That's not going to get me in anywhere, and it's not going to get you anywhere. You can complain about anything that happens at the county or other municipality levels, too. Not going to get anyone anywhere. So, I really would hope that you would at least consider an opportunity to solve this dilemma in a positive way, working together rather than fighting each other, as well as putting your city or our county residents through yet another lawsuit and expense that goes along with it. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you. We would look forward to doing something cooperative to ease the tax burden on our residents.
I absolutely do, too.
So, it is a good sign that we could work together on doing something.
And we are certainly willing to do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Hodawanitz?
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Congratulations, Mr. Rogan, Mr. Gahn. I bet you're glad that that is all behind you. Now, you can focus on four more years. Let's talk about the budget. I was surprised to see Mr. Bolzoni in a caucus in this room. I was pleasantly surprised that you opted to bring him out here, even though there was a very small public crowd, but it got televised. It's unfortunate, I don't know how many people knew that he would be in your caucus tonight and tune in at 6:00 o'clock and hear a little bit about the budget, but hopefully, there'll be more opportunities for the public in the next couple of weeks.
Joan, I'm just going to interrupt you one second, just while you're giving your talk. Today, actually, was Mr. Bolzoni's last day with the city. So, that's why we wanted to have him here this evening. So, it was the last opportunity for him to come as business administrator. That's why it was kind of on schedule.
Understand. I, too, did a quick read of the budget, just printed it out this morning. And I understand his comments about not wanting to be too specific about a possible Plan B if any of the lawsuits go against the city. The problem with that is, I, as a taxpayer, I have to plan to pay the tax. And I have to think in future years about how big is that tax bill going to be for me? And that impacts on me. So, for example, 42% of the revenues for 2018 will be Act 511 local taxes. 8% will be the refuse fee. So, 50% of the projected revenues are coming from sources that are threatened by lawsuits. And that does not include the lawsuit concerning the sale of the sewer authority. And those proceeds, and you can, as you read through the budget, you see that there are many assumptions that those proceeds are part of the budget process. So, I get very uncomfortable when people don't really want to start discussing a Plan B, because I still have to pay the tax, however high or low it might be. I, too, saw the rise in healthcare costs. I hope you noticed that overtime is going up 4.5% over 2017 budget figures. I thought that overtime was something we were going to control with the new contract. Maybe that is control. I saw the three new hires, the Assistant City Solicitor, $44,500. He's being hired due to increased volume of activity in the Law Department. I wonder what that is. A Director of Parks and Recreation for $49,000. And the mayor's getting a full-time administrative assistant. I also looked at those non-union pay raises, and the big ones are as follows. The zoning officer in Lips, $7,500 raise. The finance manager in the BA's office, $5,000. IT, only three people work there. Each one is getting at least $5,000 raise, and one is getting $5,650. City Solicitor, $5,000. And the treasurer and directors of Human Resources and DPW each get $3,000. Oh, Wayne, I noticed that all those special fees and permits under Lips, they're still there.
That's because we never got the information from Lips, so we'll see if they're there come January.
Okay, also, there's $25,000 to develop the Pocket Park on Linden Street for green space. We haven't acquired that yet, have we? That's still tabled, okay? Oh, here's my $20. Where's my Knowles insurance list?
We're holding out, Joan.
Hey, Mr. Knowles gave $2,500 to Mr. Courtright's campaign.
So, it's between what you have and $2,500, that's what's... That's what's going on.
Where's my arcade study on stormwater costs?
Mr. Bolzoni referenced that, I think. We're looking at, well, according to him, we're looking at the first quarter of next year.
Okay, well, that ought to be factored into the budget. And how much is it going to cost to repair the treehouse? Have we figured that out yet? They're still contemplating their navel up there? Okey-dokey. I'll see you next week.
Evening, council. Lenny Serebro, residents. How about that? I have no paperwork. You probably know my question, wondering if anybody got anything to tell me. Take up my whole five minutes and you guys talk.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to do that. And, I mean, the only thing that we were able to find out was with that invoice from the fire department that you received, that you brought up. That invoice gets submitted directly to your insurance company. That's not for you. That's not for personal payment. That's all gets submitted with, to the insurance company. As far as the other issue, I still haven't had any movement on that whatsoever.
How about if I find a contractor that will flush that? I'm looking, I am looking into it myself. There's people out there that will do it, and evidently, nobody else is doing it. I understand you're not getting any answers, but, you know, okay, how about I find out what it's going to cost to flush that and present it to council? What happens after that?
Well, I still think the issue is, whose property is it? I don't, I don't even know if that's the city's property.
Okay, then, why did they come out and flush half of it and then never came back to do the other half?
That's because we asked them numerous times, and I believe, and again, I'm just, I'm going off of, you know, what I'm saying. I'm not an expert on whose property that is. But they, as a courtesy to us, they went out there with the equipment that they have on hand and just tried to take care of it with what they have. And that's what was performed for us, you know, way back.
But that was useless to do half of the drain. I don't understand why they even spent the money to do that. You know, you've got to know by now, I'm a car guy, and
Sure.
And if you brought me your car and I only rebuilt half of the motor and gave it back to you, what good did that do? You paid me for rebuilding half of it, you know, but that's absolutely useless. So, that was money thrown away.
I mean, I believe they went out there, they did whatever they could for us with what they had. Well, until they could actually find out concrete who's responsible for that pipe, whose property is the pipe, that's where they are now. They're not, they weren't going to go, they can't go any further because they don't have the equipment to do it, and they don't know by law if they could legally be on that property or if they could legally hire someone to do that, subcontract it out, until they find out who owns it, who installed it. And I believe that's where the stalemate is right now.
Okay. I'm not really good at this and going to the courthouse for records and all of that. I'm sorry. I admit, I'm a bit of a dummy, you know, like the right process of doing everything. But I don't understand why you can't go to the records or wherever you have to go to look and see who owns that property. Am I missing something, you know, that you can't go and find that out?
It should be there.
Okay.
I mean, it should be there, and that's what they were looking up.
Jeez, I think that...
Who owns it and who's responsible for the property?
Well, I believe that I can go to the records and find that out in about a half hour, am I right? So, why has this taken two years to find out who owns the property?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Then, who do I go to to get that answer? That's what I thought. That's what I thought you guys are all about.
Here's what I don't understand, Mr. Serebro.
Go ahead.
Truthfully. I don't understand, and I've asked for this before, I've asked for it to be put in writing what the issue is and why they can't fix it, and they won't do that. But why can't the mayor, the city engineer, and the DPW director invite you to the mayor's office, sit down, and go over everything? You pay your taxes, correct?
No, we're on time every year.
Exactly. And if you didn't, they'd be coming after you. You have an issue at your home, you've detailed it here for the past few months, so, Mrs. Reed, if you could, send a letter to the mayor, copy the city engineer and the DPW director, and can we please try to set up a meeting between Mr. Serebro, the mayor, the city engineer, and the DPW director, and lay it all out on the table, figure out how to fix this problem? Because this is just, it's bizarre at this point. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but, you know, you come here every week, and you're asking questions that are legitimate, because this is your property, and nobody can answer them for you. And then, you know, I think we're kind of getting jerked around, you know, so...
I believe so, yeah. I agree with that 100%.
Yeah. So, if we could just please ask for a meeting, I will attend it as chairperson of Public Works as well, just so, you know, to give you finality in an answer. Can you fix it? Can't you fix it? What's the problem, and where do we go from here? End of story. So, and if we could please have that by next Thursday. Okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Marie Schumacher. First and foremost, I want to thank the veterans and their families for their services, especially those who served in combat as part of their service. I also would like to recognize the grieving people from Texas and the, I would hope that that would have been acknowledged. I noticed when I went to the website today for the city, not only did they, were they still having, they were still mourning Las Vegas, but there was not one word of sympathy or outpouring for what happened in Texas. I guess, well, I won't even say that. However, they are grieving. I'm grieving personally because of the results of the election. I really and truly thought people wanted change. I was looking forward to some transparency and, yes. And I'll stop there. However, it's apparent that the voters do not want change. They don't want transparency. They don't want answers to questions. They want more of the same-old, same-old. And I think that's really, really sad. But on to business. I will address the budget, of course, at the public hearing. Has that been scheduled?
Next week, 5:30.
Okay. One of my questions will definitely be, how many of the new recovery plan recommendations are addressed in the budget? And how many are not? But I can just subtract from the total. Mr. Wechler, do you have the date? Do you have the date for the NDC meeting?
No, not yet.
That's been promised since August. Is it going to be this year?
Has to be this year.
It has to be? Okay. Do you have the number of electric city parking, garage, parking spaces that were added in the early '90s?
No, I don't.
When do you expect to get that?
I'm not sure.
So, I guess I have to go down and do a count, huh? Sad. Mr. Evans, as County Commissioner O'Malley has become the second of the commissioners to oppose property reassessment, the gauntlet has been thrown. Will you be offering a motion tonight to both sue for a countywide assessment, reassessment, and a HUP test for all of Scranton's? If they don't want to do it for the whole county, I don't care, but at least a HUP test for Scranton's federal tax-exempt institutions that are also property tax-exempt?
I will be offering a motion on the reassessment. I'm not prepared to offer one on the HUP test, but I'll certainly consider that.
Well, I would certainly hope so. If you might recall, that was in the last recovery plan.
Yeah, I know.
It's amazing what you institute and what you overlook, and that's my great fear for the Act 47 exit.
Well, I asked for, I asked for it to be in the recovery plan, so, yeah, I totally understand that.
Also, do you have the number of construction permits issued since passage of the three-year property tax abatement?
Five.
Five. And when was that offered? And when was that passed?
When was it passed? I don't recall the date it was passed, but I...
The year, 2015?
No, I think it was 2016, I think it was passed. What?
2016.
Yeah.
And how long does that? How long does that three-year, how does that run? Does it run, I mean, if somebody does it on the last day before that law expires?
I think they're, yeah, well, in most cases, you know, you're going to finish the project sometime during the year, so they probably defer it to the following full year. So, if you, if you completed your home, a brand-new construction in June of 2017, you're going to do it for 2018, 2019, 2020, you know?
Oh, so, no matter when you do it, you get the three years?
Yeah.
It wasn't, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Perry, would you please find out for me the money that is being charged property owners, even though it goes to their insurance company when there's a fire? What account does that go into? Do you know, Mr. Evans?
It's a special account for the fire department. I remember when we set it up a few years ago, I believe it was to fund equipment for the fire department.
Interesting. And what was collected on that last year? Anybody know? If it's a special account, do you have, could we get the number? Okay. I'll be back for more next week.
Dave Pranas, Scranton. Tonight, I want to talk about something that's dear to me, and I'd like some reassurance from all of you that you will go along with this. I've been here before about this. Last week, someone came and mentioned they wanted to ban pit bulls. We've been here before, but this person said he's going to keep coming back. I don't know if you realize it, it's not the dogs, it's the owners. You know, when I worked, I'd see like 100 dogs a day, and a little poodle bit my leg. I had to get stitches. Should he ban poodles? A Doberman nearly ripped my eye out. They banned Dobermans. They all have reasons, and it's certainly not the dog. So, I'd like some reassurance from this council that law will never be passed. Where do you stand on this?
Personally, as a dog owner, I believe people are responsible for their own dogs, and no particular breed is worse than another. So, it is, I've seen pit bulls that are loving. I've seen, I have a Westie who's adorable, but sometimes she'll growl at you. So, I can't speak for, because I won't be here, but I think we need more control on how people handle their dogs.
I think there should be stricter laws on animal abuse. I think there should be jail time, high fines. I mean, everybody talks about abuse of people. What about abuse of animals? And this person mentioned last week that it was very convenient that I left after he, you know, before he, before he spoke. Well, not like it's anybody's business why I leave after I speak, but I have my boy home, Mason, and I don't like to leave him. That's why I go home, and that's where I, that's where I want to be. I come here and say what I want, and that's it. But I hope you consider this, because I understand this pit bull heard this, killed this other dog, so everybody'd be up in arms about that. But again, there's always a reason for something, and it's not the dog. Go back to the owners. You see many of these macho men that sell drugs and want to protect their house, and they have their pit bulls on chains, hooked up to trees, and they should be looked into, and they should be arrested. That's abuse.
I would agree that the issue is enforcement, not necessarily the animal.
Pardon me?
The issue is enforcement, not necessarily the animal.
Yes.
And I do agree with that.
And I think the city animal control should look into further owner situations. Pardon me?
Yeah, she does a great job, and she's one person.
Well, that's good.
And I think we need to do a better job or get her help.
Great. And I hope, another thing, I mean, even though it's Lackawanna County, I hope you keep an eye, I even mentioned to her, because she goes there all the time, to keep an eye on Griffin Pond Animal Shelter, where they have this million-dollar expansion, they have training rooms for the people and stuff like that, but they didn't have enough room for the animals, so they killed them. So, now, they're saying they're not going to kill them unless it was medically, let's see if that's going to stay true, because I don't trust them one speck if they could have done what they did in the past for years and years. It's outrageous they even have a license. So, I just hope more people will go and adopt the animals and keep an eye on them, because they're basically a shelter for animals, and they're cruel animals. They killed them for no reason. So, to me, they should be in jail. They shouldn't just be able to resign. They should be, that's the problem. They break the laws, and they don't, nothing happens to them. They just walk away. So, thank you very much, and I hope I don't have to come back here for that reason again. Please, gentlemen, please don't ever enforce a law like that. Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid, fees paid. If anyone out there in TV land or here is interested in some real news out of Washington, go online and go to dcreport.org with David K. Johnston, which brings me to the next issue. We had an issue on reassessment. The only reason I feel reassessment would benefit Scranton is so that we could put aside these lawsuits with taxes. We're based on what our appraised value is. It can only be 2% or something like that of our appraised value, and our appraised value is back in the '60s. So, as much as I don't really feel that maybe $156 is fair on an EMT tax, we have 35% tax exempts, and the county is also responsible for that, and the state of Pennsylvania. And they never seem to say, gee, guys, do you think it's time that we cut Scranton a break? So, I wish some of these people would stay after their comments, especially when they're a public official. Pilots, once again, I heard about money down the black hole. Well, where do I get to direct my taxes paid to my favorite causes? When do I get to say, I don't support that, and I don't think that we should be doing that? I was against banning cigarettes in all sections of the park. Well, it went, didn't get my way on it. Why should I pay a police officer to be chasing around a wayward cigarette smoker? You know, if it's not a public safety problem, you know? But I have to. I have to pay my property taxes, and if we want to spend $10 million a year on that, that's the way it is. I have to pay my taxes, or I lose my house. Parking Authority, my worst nightmare came true on that. I picked up the paper last week, and we're tearing off two stories of the Linden Street Garage. If there's anything you folks can do, and the mayor, to put a stop to that stupid idea, and even worse yet, tearing two levels of the garage down, and then on top of it, when are we going to see the elevator get fixed over there? When? When they're done tearing the two layers of garage off? Two years from now? Four years from now? Who knows? You know, have to take care of our friends and our family, you know? And I heard a little rumor, it's, I hope it's a rumor, on the per-bag business that the $300 is going to get inflated in order to get a per-bag. And once again, I do not... And once again, I do not support any trash at the end of anybody's property in a bag. We should have a regulation can if we're going to have that, a per-can. So it doesn't get drug around by animals, skunks, opossums, squirrels go into it. They used to steal down at work, they used to steal the crust and they wouldn't eat the cheese or the pepperoni's crust. Don't like pepperoni apparently, so... You know? And congratulations to everybody that won, and condolences to people that didn't make it. Hopefully, we'll have a more enlightened couple of years. And by the way, Henry Amoroso Strategies, just about everything is in court or nullified, so we have to be careful as to what bill of goods we buy into in the future. Thank you and have a good night.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things tonight. Hopefully, it won't be too lengthy. The first is, in light of the past Scranton Times article that made some references on possible fraudulent benefits at the SSA, I would like to make the following motion. I make a motion that a letter be sent on behalf of Scranton City Council to the Scranton Sewer Authority requesting them to enlist the Attorney General's Office to investigate any past benefit practices within that authority, which would be in violation of Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second, on the question?
Yes, on the question. I would also like, if passed, a copy of this letter sent to the Dumwore Borough Council. I'm asking for the Dumwore Council to also support our request. This is, basically, as I spoke a little bit about last week, this isn't your, and I don't want this to be your grandfather's Scranton politics, I don't want this to be your father's Scranton politics. This is our Scranton. And this is just an affirmation that whether you're in the city or the school board or in a surrounding authority, we can't tolerate any wrongdoing. Our taxes are too high, our rates are too high. And if there's any wrongdoing out there, you know, we are going to find it.
On the question, I just want to address this, and I'm glad that this was brought up this week. In the last couple of weeks, we've seen two instances of this come up, one in the school district and one with the Scranton Authority. And for those who don't know, my full-time position is selling group health care to businesses. So I'm very familiar with these rules, and non-employees are not allowed to receive health care benefits. End of story. A 1099 subcontractor cannot receive group health care benefits. So there is a severe issue here with at least two instances and maybe more. I think all the city authorities need to be looked into to see if this has been a rampant widespread practice in the past. I think we need to look at all of our authorities, and I believe the school district needs to take a deeper look as well. Generally, we've seen through the city's history, when these type of things happen, it's not one isolated incident, it's something that is a pattern. Everyone out there knows how expensive health insurance is. It's one of the most expensive things, you know, in a yearly budget for a business or for an individual. And any improper benefits that are giving out must be stopped, we have to make sure that there aren't any others. So I fully agree with Councilman Perry's motion.
Ball is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, closed. The ayes have it, so move.
Thank you. Also, I would like to be copied on communication with Mr. Lenny, our good guy, Lenny. My goodness, I feel bad for this guy, and I hope we get some resolution for him. I hope Councilman Gough's request for a meeting comes through, and I would love to see him get some kind of resolution, I know we've been working that for a while. If we can also send a letter to the Business Administrator with a copy to the Fire Department on that special account, and if we can just see what, I don't know if they have the 2017 numbers, but if they have a running total for 2017, and maybe a 2016 total, and since that count was created, to see how it's generated and what it has generated. I know Councilman Evans will speak more on the assessment, or the lack thereof, based on the vote and the two commissioners that are not for it. As I've said many times, I am for the reassessment of Lackawanna County, it's long overdue, it's much needed. And not only is it much needed for everybody in the county, but more so here for the constituents of the city of Scranton, we are in desperate need of it. So I was a little upset to see the ballot question go the way it did, even though I understand that it didn't have any teeth to it. And then more so to see two commissioners come out against it, which, you know, we kind of knew that's where the shoe was gonna drop anyway. But I'll let Councilman Evans get more into that. But, you know, I'm full steam ahead when it comes to the reassessment of Lackawanna County and what we need to do to get there. Finally, I just want to thank the Business Administrator, Mr. Bolzoni, for coming in today and giving us the rundown of the 2018 budget. Today, as many of you know, some of you may not, today is his last day. And let me tell you, since my first day on the job, I've never met somebody more professional, transparent, and readily available than Mr. Bolzoni. He knew his stuff when it came to numbers and the budget, and how to handle our debt. I think a lot of where Scranton was in the last three to four years and where it is now can be directly attributed to the efforts and knowledge that Mr. Bolzoni brought to this administration and brought to this city. I know the banking community has done a 180 when it comes to Scranton and their respect for us. And I know a lot of that's attributed to Mr. Bolzoni's hard work, so I just want to say thank you and good luck in your next endeavors, and, you know, whoever takes over has big shoes to fill. That's all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, a number of items to talk about tonight. I'd like to pick up where Mr. Perry left off and thank Business Administrator Bolzoni, who has been a great resource for City Council and for the city over his four years. He is one of the smartest people I've ever worked with when it comes to financing, especially when it comes to the financial community. So I want to thank him for his service as Business Administrator, and the next BA will certainly have very large shoes to fill. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the double pensions. The police, Council receiving copies of the police reports. Attorney Menora, again, could explain the legal aspects much better than I can, but there have been some more developments over the last week. So I'll turn that over to Attorney Menora.
Yes, Judge Moyle signed an order that was prepared by State Police Council, and it does allow Council to have access to the State Police Report for the limited purpose of reviewing it with an eye towards preparing legislation to prevent a double pension award in the future without certain guidelines. She also, in her order, maintained that everything that is reviewed is to remain confidential, and backs that up with contempt of court if it's revealed. Now, we can obviously talk about things that have been publicly put out in the newspaper or otherwise, we just cannot divulge anything directly from the State Police Report itself. So I think it'll be helpful, but we're limited that way. And it's, we're limited because of Korea, and I think I mentioned that before. Criminal Records Act prevents police agencies from releasing investigative material to unauthorized personnel, and it's a fairly long statute, but they have certain discretion, and they've decided to allow that discretion in our favor this time.
Can I just ask a question on this issue, just to Attorney Menora? So if we read the order, and then we can't discuss it or say anything about it, I mean, I just don't understand, what would be the benefit to...
No, 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 no. We just can't reveal facts contained in the investigative report.
Okay.
You can certainly say, based on what we have discovered in the report, we're going to propose certain legislation or repeal of certain legislation. That'd be okay.
Okay.
You just can't say, you know, we read the report and, you know, John Doe said X.
Right, okay.
That would be revealing the contents of the report, rather than the import of how you can use the report.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And on this issue, most importantly to me is two items.
One is enacting reforms after reviewing this report to make sure that a situation like this can never happen again. Because there are a lot of victims in this case, particularly the taxpayers of the city of Scranton. And believe it or not, also, some of the recipients believe they were receiving a legal benefit. Now, we know it wasn't, but many of them had nothing to do with the issuing of it. Some did. And that's what we need to look into. If the report reveals, you know, more damaging items, I would still support using our subpoena power to bring in key individuals from the Pension Board at the time, or others who were involved in awarding these pensions. But we'll see what the information reveals, but the most important thing is making sure that this doesn't happen again. Regarding the reassessment, I want to start off by addressing some items Commissioner Cummings mentioned. I will say that I do agree with part of what she mentioned regarding property taxes and property tax reform. I think all of us on this council are supportive of Senate Bill 76, which would be the elimination of school property taxes. But property tax reform has absolutely nothing to do with reassessment. Even if the school property taxes are eliminated and switched to another system, you're still gonna have assessments on your city and your county taxes. And particularly on the county taxes, the residents of Scranton are being short-changed. I also want to thank Councilman Evans for his leadership on this issue. That leadership has been lacking from the Commissioner's office, especially from Commissioner Cummings, who has used misinformation and scare tactics to put out a false narrative about what reassessment will actually do. Also on reassessment, and it was brought up during our caucus, the Act 511 taxes. Reassessment, if reassessment took place, that lawsuit would be out the door. The only reason that lawsuit has any chance of succeeding is because it's based on assessments from 40 and 50 years ago. If those were even multiplied by the common level ratio or reassessed, there would be no Act 511 lawsuit. So there are a number of reasons outside of the pure tax fairness issue on why reassessment needs to happen. I'm looking forward to Councilman Evans making his motion. I'll talk about it a little bit more then, but I fully support what he's doing and what he's doing to try to fight for the residents of not only Scranton, but all of Lackawanna County. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about the election. I normally don't talk about politics at meetings. I just want to thank the people of Scranton for their confidence in me, re-electing me for another four years. I want to congratulate Councilman Gough on his win as well, and our new colleague, Mr. Donahue, who will be joining us in January. I especially want to congratulate our mayor, Bill Courtright, who is criticized at a weekly basis, sometimes justified and many times not justified, from these council meetings. As we saw yesterday, the silent majority in this city has spoken. I know that Mayor Courtright dedicates every day to making the city the best place he can, and I'm looking forward to working with him and all my colleagues for the next four years. So I want to congratulate him as well, and again, thank you to the residents of Scranton. Finally, Veterans Day coming up, I do want to thank all of our veterans, who, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here exercising these rights, and we wouldn't have been able to have that election we had just yesterday, or just Tuesday. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate publicly Mayor Courtright on winning his second term as mayor. I look forward to working together with him for the betterment of the city. I spoke to the mayor personally today and did offer my congratulations over the phone. I would also like to recognize Jim Mulligan for stepping into the arena, giving a spirited run in the mayor's race. He and his family have a lot to be proud of. Congratulations also to my council colleagues, Bill Gough and Pat Rogan, and to Councilman-elect Kyle Donahue. I'm looking forward to continuing our work together and having Mr. Donahue join us in January. I'd also like to briefly recognize Council President Joe Wexler, who will be with us next year for his leadership since the passing of Bob McGough. It could be said that Joe may have sacrificed himself because he stepped up to be the leader. And of course, that's what good public servants do. So Joe deserves our respect and our gratitude. So thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
All right, let's talk about reassessment.
Really?
Really. First of all, I want to read a part of a letter the mayor sent to the county commissioners today, hand-delivered. And I'm just gonna read the last couple paragraphs. "I am disappointed that the board has failed to seriously address this incredibly important issue. I strongly believe the residents and business owners that call Scranton home will benefit from a reassessment. I feel just as strongly that families and businesses looking to move into Scranton see the unfair property assessment and then look elsewhere. It is time for the county to treat this matter with the seriousness it deserves, given how important a reassessment is for our future. Unfortunately, I am not encouraged by recent statements that once again kick the can down the road. Please consider this letter my request on behalf of the city of Scranton to you, the Board of County Commissioners, to begin the reassessment process in earnest. If I continue to see no progress at the county level on this issue, then I will be forced to consider all options available to me to see if the county see to it that the county fulfills its responsibility." Sincerely, William L. Courtright, Mayor of Scranton. So I'd like to thank the mayor for sending that letter and being engaged in this very important discussion. So tonight's comments on reassessment are brought to you by the Number Two and the letters N and O. So for over four decades, tax fairness has been held hostage by two votes. The failure of just two county commissioners over that timeframe to continually vote no on reassessment has brought us to this point. It is possible over the last 40-plus years that the county has lost hundreds of millions of dollars in assessed valuation through the appeals process, driven by the inequity in our county tax system. Scranton would have lost tens of millions of dollars in that same period, maybe more. This equates to real and substantial tax dollars lost. Additionally, we are trapped in an unfair, two-tiered system, a tax system that we cannot change without a reassessment. We have watched neighboring cities and counties experience growth that simply won't happen in a city and a county without a reassessment. We have a broken system that is unfair to property owners, municipalities, school districts, and those who provide additional growth to our communities through development and new construction. We have an appeals process that, because of a lack of a reassessment, protects the well-connected and the well-off, and hurts those that we should be helping in the first place. Every expert, bar none, supports reassessment. But we continue to be held hostage by the Number Two and the letters N and O. What I make the motion that is suspected tonight is not done lightly or without forethought. I actually dislike the idea of litigation. We are a society that, quite frankly, is lawsuit-driven, and I find that regrettable. But we have a responsibility to our citizens to do what we think is the right thing for them and the city overall. When the people elected all of us to our positions on City Council, they elected us to make the hard decisions for them. That is when the people spoke. Because we are a representative democracy. And I do not believe the people truly spoke on the issue of reassessment on Tuesday. So I reject the results of a flawed ballot question already rejected by the courts. It is without a doubt a question that was crafted to drive out a no vote, all while being supported by a false narrative. The governing body of the city of Scranton is made up of two entities. The executive branch, which includes the mayor, and the legislative branch, which includes City Council. Hopefully, we would want this initiative to be a partnership. We would want to work with the mayor and be united in a common goal of achieving tax fairness to our property owners and taxpayers. And if we lead, I believe others will follow. I would expect school districts and other municipalities up and down the valley to join us in this endeavor. So with all that said, I would like to make the following motion. That we send a letter asking the mayor of the city of Scranton on behalf of Scranton's taxpayers and the city of Scranton to initiate a lawsuit in Lackawanna County Court to force- city of Scranton, to initiate a lawsuit in Lackawanna County Court to force a county-wide reassessment, if we continue to see no progress on this issue in the immediate future, as per the mayor's letter.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question. All is in favor? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, on the question, sorry. I thought somebody else was going to go first. I agree with everything that Mr. Evans just said, and I've said before that I support reassessment. However, I'm going to vote against this motion for a number of different reasons. First of all, I have a concern that the city is already involved now in three major lawsuits, the Act 511, the trash lawsuit, rental registration, the sewer authority, Municipalities Act lawsuit, and there's probably even more. I think that we should investigate every other avenue, as the mayor rightly put in his letter, that now he's going to be forced to consider all options available. I'd like to look at all options available before the city gets involved in another lawsuit. My concern, as I just mentioned, the city's involved in three major lawsuits at this time, and another lawsuit suing another governmental entity at this time may drag on for months. It'll probably be appealed to Commonwealth Court, and it's probably going to cost the taxpayers and the city a large amount of money. We'll probably have to hire outside counsel and also hire experts on the assessment issue. So my concern is that we would end up with more legal bills without a reasonable expectation that we would be successful. So while I agree with Mr. Evans' reassessment views, I think right now there would be a concern with getting involved in a lawsuit that may cost the city a small fortune to see it through. Thank you.
On the question, I purposely did not put a hard date on this because I was aware of the lawsuits that were pending, so it is up to the mayor to make this decision, not City Council. We're only asking them to get involved. And I don't think it's really heavy lifting in a lawsuit, because the truth of the matter is, we are the poster child for tax unfairness in the state of Pennsylvania. So I think any reasonable judge will rule in our direction, and probably would be relatively speedily as well. So I'm comfortable with the motion, and I think that, again, we're not putting a mandate on the administration as far as time is concerned. We're looking at the immediate future, and I'm sure if there's other things that the mayor's talking about can be done, we would support that. We all want to get to the same place. But after 40-plus years, do we really think the county commissioners are going to voluntarily do a reassessment? Sorry, I think not.
I'd just like to reiterate my support for Councilman Evans' motion, and regarding some of the questions that were brought up by Councilman Gahn, and I mentioned this earlier, the 511 lawsuit is based on property tax assessments. So the lack of a reassessment is the cause of that lawsuit. Again, and as Councilman Evans mentioned, 40 years, the county commissioners, and again, we put a lot of the blame on the current commissioners, but it's not just on them. You know, 40 years is, and it's over 40 years, is 10 terms of county commissioners. So you think of, you know, presidential year being four terms, so think of how many presidents there have been in that time, how many county commissioners there have been, and nothing has happened. So we desperately need a reassessment. I know the Chamber of Commerce has come out in favor of reassessment. It will help spur business in the city. It will provide tax fairness. So I support this 100%, and again, I'd like to thank Councilman Evans for making up for the lack of leadership in the county commissioners' office that we've seen here tonight. So looking forward to voting yes on this motion.
Yeah, and on the question, I'm already on the record by being for the reassessment, and I think the key word that Councilman Evans said was voluntary. We've waited, you know, a bit patiently this last year to see how this referendum was going to play out, and I think it played out exactly how we thought it was, not in our favor. So what choices do we have left? I don't think, I don't think there's any other way other than to force their hand to make this happen for the citizens of Scranton. So again, I'm in favor of this motion.
Yes. In terms of the reassessment, by the state constitution, the county is required to do an assessment, reassessment. You can't be for it or against it. I'm against taxes. I'd love to say I'm against taxes, and we're not going to have them anymore either. This is something that you're obligated to do. It's not a question of being for it or against it. It's something that we're required to do. Our hands are tied as a council, as a city. Mayor Courtright has stepped up. We kind of waited to see what the results were going to be, and I would have asked any other person who took over the mayor's office to do the same thing. The city has to stand up to represent us. We are responsible for the city of Scranton. So I support Mr. Evans' motion. I support the mayor's effort to get this done. No one wants to go to court. Some of the suits that have been brought to the city have been brought by citizens, and we can't control that. So we're going to have to deal with every lawsuit that comes our way, but I think this is a lawsuit that we may have to instigate to protect the citizens of Scranton. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so moved. Still have the floor, Mr. Evans.
I'm sorry. We were having so much fun, I forgot where we were. That's all April night, thank you very much, and thank you, gentlemen.
Yes. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Just two brief things. I would like to, and I already mentioned this to Mrs. Reed, set up a meeting with the Executive Director of the area on aging regarding the issues that I've mentioned over the last few weeks with the residents of the Green Ridge Senior Apartments. So we're trying to set that meeting up. We have not heard back from this gentleman yet regarding the letter that council sent last week on all of those issues that were raised. So we're going to start here and then see where this goes, but I continue to be concerned about all of those issues that have been brought up. The second thing, and it was mentioned earlier tonight, I do believe a meeting or a public caucus with NDC and ABM, who are running the parking garages, in council chambers, open to the public, to give us an update on all of the issues and the things that have transpired over the last year in relation to the parking garage, the progress that's been made, and then what's going to happen in 2018 and what their plans are. I think that would be beneficial not only to the council but to the public, because there are a lot of things that are going on behind the scenes. And finally, I just want to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day on the 11th, this Saturday. I'd like to thank all of the veterans for the sacrifices that they've given to this country, and I'd also like to wish a happy 242nd birthday to the United States Marine Corps. And I want to thank my dad for his service. He is a United States Marine and Semper Fi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. This evening, I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Rogan, Mr. Gahn. I've worked with them for the past four years. They're dedicated servants. They put the extra time in that's needed, and they serve their public well. I'd also like to congratulate Councilman-Elect Donahue. He was here this evening, so I gave him a little sample of the budget, so he could start his homework on that. And I do wish him the best of luck. I will be here until the end of the year, and I will continue to support City Council any way I can. Any questions that my current colleagues have, or any questions that Mr. Donahue may have, I'll be happy to answer them as well. I would like also to congratulate Mayor Courtright for his victory, and I also would like to thank Mr. Mulligan for his efforts. In a campaign such as this, we had a healthy debate about the city really starting. Mr. Mulligan never stopped running from when he lost four years ago. We've had a healthy debate over the past four years, debating issues that really have impacted the city, and the city is in better shape for this. I don't necessarily agree that we should criticize the electorate. The electorate picks who they pick. And in our democracy, I do believe that you have to respect the will of the people as they vote, and criticizing people for how they voted, I don't think does any good with that. In terms of the package that we're going to receive about the pension investigation, I am quite concerned about that, dealing with the fact that it requires the utmost security. So as we deal this, and I'll talk to attorney more about this, I'm actually a bit concerned with having that report in this building. We have high levels of security in our office. Our office is always locked. Mrs. Reed's office is locked after we leave, but I'm actually thinking if it might not be a better idea to keep it somewhere in your office where you have security of it and we read it there. I'm not sure if that's overkill or not, but I'm not sure how the order says it. I just want to make sure that, especially because as, there's only going to be, I believe the five of us that are currently here allowed to look at it. I'm not sure, you know, I think there was some mention about employees of the council office as well, being allowed to look at it.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's in the order or necessary for us to do.
Okay.
Let me work on the security of that, because it's actually by court order, my responsibility, and we can discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, especially if it's going to come, let's say it comes the last week of December, I'm not going to be here anymore. So it doesn't make sense for me to look at it if, you know, it's going to carry over, because since I won't be able to do anything with it anyway. And also, the other council members, we have a right to read it or not read it. If we choose not to read it, that's our right as well. I would encourage everyone to read it, so we can get the most out of this. As Councilman Rogan has talked about, we want to prevent this from happening in the future. But I am concerned, I don't even know what's in it, so I don't know if there's names.
Nor do I.
If there's recipients, if there's investigator. I don't know what's in it, and I do believe that since there is litigation still concerning the people receiving that, I personally don't want to be involved in anything that may, you know, have an impact on that suit positively or negatively for the city. So when you get it, we'll talk about it and see how we want to control access to it.
Exactly. I don't have it yet, and when I do, I think we need to sit down and talk about a couple of things, and that would be in executive session, because it affects a number of different litigation problems.
And it is very important that we take steps to not so much do anything about what happened, but prevent any further incidences of this. I think that's our responsibility as a council, and to me, that's the benefit of this, not actually looking back, but looking forward. Like I said, Councilman Rogan has taken the lead on this, and I applaud him for that, but we have to be very careful with this information.
Agreed.
It might be one piece of paper. We don't even know it. It could be.
I have no idea.
We don't know what it is.
They haven't told me any of that.
Yeah. So like I said, we'll work on that and get it right. The last thing I'd like to talk about tonight, I mentioned it well, Business Administrator Bolzoni was here. The one thing that he talked about, which I think is crucial going forward next year, is the dialogue between City Council, the mayor's office, and the Business Administrator's office. Mr. Bolzoni took the initiative to have the Business Administrator's office do much more than it was really responsible for. Mr. Bolzoni has taken the lead on several projects that we're seeing the benefit of. He really took the lead on really the lighting. He took a lead on how to do paving. He took the lead on the Novembreno Splash Park, and he was a wealth of information to me. I know he was a wealth of information to other council members, and his best intentions were to improve the city. I think he did that. I think his mark will be left on the city forever, and I appreciate the service that he gave us, and I wish him good luck in his other adventures. And he made the mistake of leaving his phone number, so I'm sure we'll be calm as we can. And I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
5B for introduction. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of Tax and Revenue Anticipation Notes, Series of 2018, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12,750,000, providing for the date, interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment and place of payment in respect of the notes, excepting the proposal attached hereto as Exhibit B, from the financial institution named therein. For the purchase of the notes, naming a sinking fund, depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the notes and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the notes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction. An ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2018 to and including December 31, 2018, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5C, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. Just a couple of things. First of all, I haven't really had a chance to review this in full, because we only received the budget, I only received the budget on Wednesday. I would have liked to received it a lot sooner, so that we would have been even more prepared to have a more, even more in-depth discussion with the Business Administrator. So I was disappointed on that front. I also continue to be disappointed in a way that Mayor Courtright does not show up to this budget presentation for a number of different reasons. The major one is that this is his budget. He signs the dotted line when it becomes the budget in finality, and I think it would be beneficial, if we're talking about transparency and keeping an open line of discussion, that he comes here to counsel with the Business Administrator to discuss his policies, his programs, and the initiatives that are included in this budget. So I think moving forward, we really should ask him to do that, because I think it would not only be beneficial to this council, but for the public, to hear from the mayor, because this is the budget that he, along with the Business Administrator, puts together, and it's a reflection on his administration and what direction it's going to move in the next year. I'll be able to provide further comment once I've done a thorough review of the budget in the next two weeks. Thank you.
All is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
I make a motion to correct two typographical errors as found within the budget on the following line items. Number 1, 01.310.311.0, Real Estate Transfer Tax, 2.70, correct to read 2.20. 2, 01.380.38004, Miscellaneous Revenues, PALCB License Fees, 2018 Operating Budget Total, $38,600, correct to read 2018 Operating Budget Total, $37,600.
Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a trail maintenance agreement between the city of Scranton and Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for the maintenance and upkeep of the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5D, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute the deed conveying title from the city of Scranton Parking Authority to the city of Scranton, the property located at 100 Rear South Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the city of Scranton, as more fully described in Exhibit A, attached hereto and made a part hereof.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5E, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction. A resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an addendum to the contract between the city of Scranton and CC Cleaning Services for janitorial services for Scranton City Hall and the Scranton Police Headquarters.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5F, be introduced to its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all is in favor of On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 121, 2017. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a lease agreement with G A R Memorial Association to extend their current lease, which is set to expire on November 28, 2017, for an additional year for a portion of the basement of City Hall to be used as exhibited meeting space.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'd like to make a motion to amend Agenda Item 6A to extend the lease agreement with the G A R Memorial Association to a five-year period beginning November 28, 2017, and ending November 28, 2022.
The motion fails for lack of a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 122, 2017. An ordinance amending file of the council number 65, 2016. An ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2017 by transferring $14,499 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number as noted, Office of the City Clerk, City Council, Professional Services, to provide sufficient funding for the payment of financial obligations through the 2017 budget period.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second. On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of the council number 123, 2017. An ordinance amending file of the council number 65, 2016. An ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2017 by transferring $200,000 from account number as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number as noted, Department of Licensing, Inspection, and Permits, Bureau of Buildings, P A W C Water, to provide sufficient funding for the payment of P A W C Water invoices through the 2017 budget period.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second. On the question, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file of the council number 118, 2017. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the period beginning January 1, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Peely?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.[1786.83][1786.83][applause]